At this time, I'd like to call a meeting to order. We can all stand for a pleasure. Allegiance to the flag, United States of America, to the Republic, what we stand as one nation, on the God.
Invisible.
Justice. If we could remain standing for a minute, I'd like to recognize how bold the silence for all the nine eleven victims, the current victims that are suffering from COVID-19. Thank you very much. It's time, if anyone wishes to report or photograph the meeting, express notify the chair, who then inform the public for Massachusetts Meeting Law, July 2010. Such audio or video recording may not interfere with the meeting. Being said, public comment. Comments are welcome during the public comment segment. Follows comments to our recording secretary at Maria Fadet, brain of Bethel, Otech dot ad. Later than three P M. On Monday, September thirteenth, twenty one. Okay. Is there any public comments?
I'm unaware of any public comments at the moment. Mrs. Fadet has been out of the office, and so access to that voicemail has been difficult. But any public comments that were submitted will be read at the next school committee meeting.
All right, Mr. Shea. Mr. Watson. Okay, reading of the notice of minutes. Meeting, we've got reports, approval of bills, motion being in order to.
To approve.
A motion on the floor. A motion second on the question. Question. Those in favor? Posed, so voted. Contract for designer service for replacement of six H V A C units, the business manager will give us a little update on that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In front of you, you have the award letter that will be sent to C A Crowley Engineering Firm for the designer selection services for the replacement of six H vac units on the roof. Mr. Aruda, the facilities manager, and I reviewed all of the eight submissions that we had. We evaluated each submission based on the criteria of being a member of the. Designer services. They had to demonstrate that they have participated in at least three similar projects within the last five years. They had to have history of work with the public sector. They had to have similar size and scope of the project that we were bidding for, well, the design services for the project, excuse me. We also did valuation on their ability of being an M C P P O and knowing the laws in regards to the M C P P O organization. And they needed to be affiliated with A T A compliant requirements. Once Mr. Aruda and I reviewed the eight applicants, we then narrowed it down to three based on the criteria that we had put in place. We did a call to the references that they listed. All three organizations, we called all three references. And from there, Mr. Aruda and I determined that the C A Crowley Engineering Firm would be the best suit for our project needs, the design of services.
Motion being in order to approve.
Motion to approve.
Second. In the second, I have to throw on a question of the business manager. Those in favor? Posed, so voted. Okay, we also have approval of the rental application, please. This manager.
Thank you. Excuse me, and working with Mr. Mathia for some organizations that wanted to utilize our school fields. We realized that the rental application that we had for the district was for every area of the school. And for some parts of the facility outside, as far as the field house or even the actual field use, some of the things didn't apply. So we separated the application, and that's why you have two in front of you. One is the rental application for the building, such as the cafeteria, the auditorium, a classroom. That is one application. And then the other one is the athletic fields or the field house rental. In this application, it was determined that the fees or additional rentals at the bottom of the second page, well, actually the third, because the second page has a second side to it. At the bottom of the third page, we needed to change the rates of the per hours. Because the employees that will sign up to do these events, their pays have increased with cost of living adjustments or their stipend increase. And what we were charging was not enough to cover what their hourly rate was at the time of them performing the service that we needed for the rental. So we just increased every value by just five dollars an hour to get us pretty much even as far as what the employee gets paid per hour for the duty that they would sign up for, whether it be custodian or lighting or site director. That's pretty much it. That was changed. You will see that there are different fees if you are school related, if you are a nonprofit, or you are a profit making business. Those fees fluctuate based on what type of organization you are after your actual rental of the facility because your base charge. And then anything you need on top of that should go to the other two categories of per hour rates. So we're just asking the committee if you could approve the two new applications and then the new rates on the bottom portion for the additional fees.
I do like that you incorporated who to break down and then set up fees too. So that's very good. Motion be in order to approve.
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a second. Second, anything further on the question? Anything further on the question? All in favor? All opposed? So voted. Hello, Superintendent, Mr. Watson. We have a new shout out.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. So members of the committee, I wanted to take a moment every month to kind of recognize the outstanding contributions of a staff member, a small team of staff members on kind of on the go forward. So it's going to be a regular monthly agenda item, at least for this school year, so we see it. And this doesn't undermine any of the contributions that are happening every day by our team. As you can imagine, getting school operational for twenty one hundred and nineteen kids and hundreds of faculty and staff members every day is an enormous challenge for all of us. But I think it's important that we not only recognize the great work that our people do each and every day, but when folks go above and beyond to help others, that we take a special moment, a quick moment at a monthly meeting to kind of recognize that efforts. And so tonight, I want to recognize the efforts of Joanne Romanelli, who I think has gone above and beyond her responsibilities as the Academy B Administrator in the early days of the school year. We continue to look for an E M T instructor. And absent that person being able to fulfill that role, Joanne has jumped in that classroom herself to teach that class. She has been instrumental in the Bi next now test and stay program, which has literally tested hundreds of folks, staff and students alike as part of a plan to make sure that we keep those kids in school, those staff members in school, as opposed to quarantining them. And we'll be talking about that shortly tonight. But Joanne has been instrumental in that endeavor as well. And that doesn't undermine the great work that each and every other staff member has done. But I think it's worthy of special recognition tonight. And so the first superintendent shout, I'd like to commend Mr. Romanelli publicly for going above and beyond her work as the Academy B Administrator to help the school in multiple aspects on the go forward. So congratulations to Joanne and also to the entire team for their work on the start of the school year.
Do we have any actions necessary on that? Anybody have any comments on that? Again, like this, like this concept, I think it's even just little things like that we don't hear about, so I appreciate it. Comments? Other comments? Okay, we'll move right along. COVID-19 protocols again, Superintendent Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Again, another quick change where we have graphs and things for you folks to see in our packets. We all know what we're talking about. We've sent the packet electronically now to Mr. Pius so he can broadcast that for viewers at home to be able to take a look at that. They don't need to look at me talking about what this issue is. They need to be able to see what the information is that we're trying to share. And so what we wanted to talk about quickly tonight was both the results of our student and staff vaccination surveys. And so as you'll see, currently, we have four hundred and ninety six responses from the student vaccination surveys where eighty, nearly eighty one percent of students have responded that they are in fact vaccinated. That's great, except it's about a quarter of our kids. And so we really can't celebrate too much that we're at the eighty percent mark because we don't know where three quarters of our students actually are in terms of the vaccination status. My guess is it probably falls pretty much in line with what's happened regionally. Vaccination rates among students twelve to fifteen and sixteen to nineteen in all three of our sending districts hovers between twenty eight and thirty eight percent. So we're probably pretty close to a lockstep with those numbers. There's a lot of work to do. The good news is we ran our second vaccination clinic today, this afternoon, and we had north of sixty community members that showed up to be vaccinated. That's up from forty three or so, forty four or so in late August when we ran our first clinic. So we'll report that to the local board of health as well during our call next week. We need more of that to happen community wide for us to get to get to those numbers. On the staff side, the results are obviously a little bit more encouraging. We've heard for two hundred and forty five staff members, nearly ninety three percent reporting that they are vaccinated. Again, this is self-reported information. We have not asked for any concrete information. We are monitoring that stuff statewide. At this point, there has been no mandate around vaccinations for schools, but we are having, those conversations are occurring at state level. So that's the information around the COVID-19 protocols. The other thing I would mention to you is we did, as I mentioned, the Bi next now test and stay protocol, which happens in the student forum every morning. Last week, we tested three hundred and eighty one staff and students. We had a positivity rate of one point five seven percent. So just in terms of context, that is considerably better than what the positivity rates were in Dartmouth, New Bedford, and Fairhaven. In Dartmouth, it was five point four six percent as of Thursday, three point two eight percent in Fairhaven, and four point eight four percent in New Bedford. And so what we can glean from that early data is the fact that the mitigation strategies like masking are helping to reduce the spread of COVID-19 in schools. And again, the lion's share of those tests are negative. And so those staff and students who would have been quarantined last year are remaining in school. I expect next week, those numbers will be even higher. We tested over a hundred and eighty people today alone and nearly a hundred yesterday. So close contacts are growing. We get positive cases, we're testing those folks. But again, those numbers this week, which will be reported next week, are very favorable as a positivity test rates. I am sending out a weekly superintendent communication, Sunday nights, to all staff. One of the key sections of that is the COVID-19 protocols and data, in which we're highlighting the information to be transparent of what's happening within the school and comparing that data to what's happening in the state, in the region. And so I will be including all of those superintendent updates in your October packet so you can see the communication that's going out to all staff on Sunday nights. Thank you, Mr. Toomey.
Okay. I don't believe there's any action necessary on that. Any questions on Mr. Watson? To. Okay, moving right along, school reopening. Oh, I'm sorry, professional development update again, Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. I want to thank Mr. Williams and Mr. Watt for their work around the professional development schedule. I wanted to include this in your packets, having approved the first Unit A teacher's contract in July. This was the schedule for the first two professional development days for all Unit A members and administrators on August twenty fifth and twenty sixth. Wanted you to be able to see what the agenda looked like for those two days. And I also want to quickly run through a feedback survey that we sent to all staff immediately following the professional development in order to get their feedback on how they thought the first two days went. And that feedback will be used as we build next year's school calendar to decide how we want to address some of these issues. So we asked, our first question of them was, were you an academic or vocational teacher? You'll see that of the responses we got, it's nearly fifty fifty, but slightly more vocational educators responded than academic educators. Our second question focused on the annual required mandated trainings for the Department of Ed, which included things like civil rights, five oh four and I E P compliance. We asked the question, this has to be done every year by every school district by September thirtieth. This year, we chose to do that during the two professional development in-service days rather than first half day, which is this Friday. So our question was, would you rather complete this during the full day professional development as opposed to our first half day? And you'll see the responses were nearly two to one in favor of that being the approach. There is some work that we're going to do, things that we noticed about trying to separate those presentations, because it's never easy to sit through multiple presentations in a back to back. So there's some administrative work we're going to do about splitting that up and separating it. But it was good to hear that nearly by a two to one margin, staff preferred to do that now rather than on our first half day. Then we also asked staff about time collaborating with their colleagues to rank from one to five. Did you get not enough time or too much time? You'll see that most folks felt like it was just right in the middle, although if asked, they felt like they didn't get enough as opposed to too much. And so that information could kind of help us as we prepare for next school year's reopening in terms of maybe we need to provide a few more minutes of collaboration time between team members in the shops and in academics to get ready for the school year. Then finally, our last question was, did the two days prior to the school year provide you enough time to prepare for the arrival of students to your classroom? You'll see that fifty two percent said not enough, a small majority, forty four percent felt like it was just right, and a couple felt as though it was too much. So we're in the ballpark of what we're going to do. We may tweak that a little bit to provide a little bit more time for collaboration, as I mentioned just a moment ago, with staff on the go. So that's how we rolled out the beginning years. That's the feedback we got from the staff, and that'll be used by the team to kind of plan for next year. Thank you.
Question, Mr. Shea.
Yeah, the last, the last bullet you talked about reading time, I know sometimes it takes a different one that's a little farther away from us that only teachers could go in like one or two days ahead of time. But our staff is able to come in really a number of times that they want. So if they're feeling they're not getting enough time in two days, there are an opportunity for staff to come in a week before or three days. Because I think sometimes, you know, people assume that they're only limited to two. I do want to make sure that, you know, this is a little different here. You're not limited to that only two. If you feel it takes you another extra two days to step in room, come in a week before it stops. So, so I think that's, I think that would, that's just be said that, you know, that's okay. Not a negative thing, but if you need more time, you do have more time at the school. Thank you.
Yep, we can, we can certainly convey that to the team as well.
Any other consideration? I don't believe there's any action necessary in that. So move right along, school reopening, Principal Williams.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Yes, indeed, we've started, we've opened up the school year. I think it's been a positive, exciting start to the school year. Obviously, not without any speed bumps with a school this large. Sarah will talk a lot about some of the exciting things coming up for all of our students in the building. But one of the most important things for me as we roll out this year is to really try to instill and open the school year with a sense of normalcy, unlike what we've seen in the last two years. And so for the first time in two years, we've had our class meetings. Mr. Pimental, Assistant Principal, Assistant Principal Pimental presented a class meeting to our freshman and myself and a number of other administrators presented to our tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grades. And he spoke to our students, all twenty one hundred of our students, about we instilled respect, our expectations for the school. Mr. Brigger spoke about attendance. Mr. Karen, our Assistant Principal of grades ten, eleven, and twelve, spoke about what the expectations are around suspension, expulsion, security. And Mr. Murres spoke about scheduling. Dr. Larkin introduced our guidance team. And Skills USA was also spoken about, spoke about yearbook. Student Council spoke to the students. And also the class advisor spoke about some of the fun events that were coming up for the school year. So for me, I think the class meetings are so vital because it sets the tone for the year. I think we've had a very positive start to the school year, and I think you can attribute some of that to these class meetings. Couple of other things I want to talk about is our incident command team, something that we hadn't done in a couple of years. And that is a team that is assembled, an assembly of myself, the assistant principals, Mr. Aruda, our facilities director, and a host of other people, really around ensuring that our fire alarm, our fire drills, staple procedures, Alice lockdown are done with fidelity and that they are executed efficiently and that everyone in the building is aware of those procedures. All in addition, we spoke about our flip charts, our gold buckets, and the different things that we have to keep the people in this building safe and the building itself safe. And so that has been been reassembled and we have met once already. This Friday, we have a rear door bus evacuation training as well as a bus driver appreciation breakfast. So again, we started off, I think, full steam ahead, exciting, and I think everyone in the building is feeling the same way.
Any questions of Mr. Williams? So on this, on this, you, with the mentoring programs for the freshmen and coming, introducing that?
Yes, Dr. Larkin introduced the mentor program as well.
I'd just like to commend you and your whole team, Mr. Watson. Mr. Shea and I were there at the opening and quite interesting to see how you handled ten thousand kids coming in and associated parents and whatever. So it was very interesting.
I'd like to thank Mr. Toomey, thank Mr. Principal Williams for his work. So as you know, we're in the midst of a little bit of a transition, right? To kind of focus on a lot of the district work that needs to be done. And, and he was hired to be the school, school leader, right? And that's, that's the role of principal. And so I'd like to publicly recognize his efforts. Been a lot of long days. It's a tough job. This is a job that was done by multiple people over the last long period of time. And so we've made some shifts and he's been visible in the hallways, in the lunchroom. It's been exactly what I had envisioned, but I spoke to you about it six months ago. And so he deserves to be commended, and I want him to feel good about the work that he's done to start up the school year because it's not an easy job. And there's more work that needs to be done for us to make sure that we're on the right path from an instructional standpoint. And it's going to be a bumpy year, and him and I have spoken about that a little bit in terms of him shouldering a lot of that work as we shift some of those resources around. And I'm really proud of him, and I want to make sure the committee knows that his, his efforts are both recognized and appreciated.
Good job. Any other questions or points? Okay, again, if there's any questions needed on that, any action? Okay, we're moving right along. Director of Equity, Diversity, Inclusiveness, and Family Engagement update, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey, and we are preparing to move forward with the committee. The committee is just about formed. As I've mentioned in the past, I've asked Principal Williams and Human Resource Director Marky to co-chair that committee, which will include six to eight members to be in the screening process of those applications. The goal is to present me with two or three finalists, folks that the team believes can do the job. I will meet individually with those people and make the decision at that point. So I expect that process to be lifted this week. It'll probably take us a week or so to review those applications, get those interviews scheduled. We're probably looking at at least a two week process from today before the finalists are landing near my desk. At the end of September, first week of October, I will meet with those folks. Appointment of that, which I hope to be able to announce at the October school committee meeting, subject to, of course, successful, an assistant, successful contract negotiation. Give that person a chance if they're leaving another employer to be able to give notice. But I am optimistic that by the middle of next month, we will have our first Director of Equity, Diversity, Inclusivity, and Family Engagement on staff. We are working in a number of other grant opportunities through S R three, which we'll talk about momentarily, as well as some equity gaps to build that arm of the district. Information will be rolled out next month, but I just wanted the committee to feel and be updated on the progress that we're making towards this appointment. Thank you, Mr. Toomey.
Questions? Watson. Questions, the motion being in order to get a report. Question made, second. Those in favor? All are so voted. Moving right along, admissions regulations update, again, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Very quick update on this. I'd like to thank Chairman Toomey and Dr. Marlin, member Dr. Marlin, as well as member Mr. Durgan, who have been part of the admission subcommittee review team. We've met a few times. We have another meeting scheduled for September twenty seventh, in which we'll be kind of finalizing some internal draft discussions around admissions policy. I wanted to let the committee know tonight in your package, you'll see the chapter seventy four C V T E Admissions Policy Submission Deadline Waiver Form, which I submitted on behalf of the district to the commissioner's office earlier, I think it was last week. That original deadline was October first. I indicated in that submission, we will not be ready on October first, that we will be ready at some time in the middle of December. I put a December fourteenth school committee date for final ratification with material sent to the department by Friday, December seventeenth. That request was approved by the commissioner. That's what you see included here. I am cautiously optimistic, we'll beat that timeline, but we'll need at least two reads on an admissions policy. And at best, it'll be October, November. At worst, October, December, November, December as a timeline, because we certainly want to involve the community in this discussion. We know how lively this has been in our area. So we've got some work to do once we, one of our internal procedures in a couple of weeks.
Okay, any questions on?
Sure.
Connected with Mava and all that, others also extending?
Yes.
Is that kind of a normal thing rather than the.
Yeah, so at the, at the retreat, there was, there was discussion around most of the Mava districts have requested an extension. Those calls with the Mava superintendents are beginning again this Thursday afternoon. There'll be weekly on Thursdays. I would surmise that this is going to be something we're talking about as a group, especially those six or eight schools that have been identified mainly. But yes, to my knowledge, all of those schools have requested an extension.
Yeah, that's so darn usual to be delayed and try to be on the same page. Thank you. Our understanding from the meeting, seventy percent of the school systems involved requested. Attention.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Watson. Motion being in order, accept this report. Second, anything further on a question? All in favor? All are so voted. PASIP report, Mr. Pius.
Mr. Toomey, last year, we implemented a program through PASIP. So the reason why we implemented PASIP was to enable a two-way communication with families. We want to know what we're doing well, what our family's concerns, how can we improve as a school? And PASIP allows that two-way communication to happen bi-weekly. So last week was our first, what we call a pulse check to families. And out of the responses, eighty one percent of families are happy how they're going. Fourteen percent are mostly happy and five percent are not happy. And based on the grades, ninth grade families are eighty nine percent happy, tenth grade families eighty two percent, eleventh grade seventy five percent, and twelfth grade sixty nine percent. So again, this gives families an opportunity to reach out, voice their concerns. You can send out through an email or a text bi-weekly. You also have an opportunity to praise how we do things. And a couple of quotes, "Vogue is always good at keeping families informed of everything we need to know. Nurses are amazing and very helpful." "My son has flourished, flourished since G M B V T last year as a freshman. His confidence has skyrocketed. He speaks highly of all his teachers and coaches. Last year, gave me a window into his classroom with at-home learning. The educators I saw kept the kids interested and engaged for most of their lessons. It was pretty amazing." So again, we do get praise, but we also get some, some concerns. So follow-up is we have someone in the school who then calls anyone who leaves their information, and we address any concerns or any questions they may have. And that is, that is the purpose of PASIP. PASIP is short for parent gossip. And we'll, we'll continue doing that this year.
Any questions of Pius? Mr. Barrow?
That's one question. For instance, like in the twelfth grade, now, is there a reason or do you, based on that information, what kind of follows? or do you, based on that information, what kind of follow-up would you do to change that?
So, so what we do is every, there's a report per grade and then how they answer it, already concerns that they mentioned, we'll dive into a little bit deeper. And so we'll contact those families who choose to be contacted to address any of those concerns. Actually, it does vary between grades. And usually, it's on last year's grades. The ninth grade families are usually higher with how we're, like having how, how we're doing things in our school. Last year was low because of COVID and, you know, it was different.
Last year, we had the librarian, two-thirds of the year, there weren't kids in the library. So one of her chief responsibilities was to contact any parent on the PASIP survey who had expressed a desire to be contacted. So every other week, I received a, a report from her that basically said, this is, this is the parent who called, this was their issue, this is how I went about resolving it. I, I would guess, you know, seniors are, we're definitely a tougher spot, right? Sarah and I have talked about this, like, we're working really hard to try to bring back some normalcy. So as a parent, I'm sure that was, the last two years have been really tough on, on all parents, but particularly on parents who are watching the juniors and seniors go through high school and having a lot of those memorable events kind of side, sidestrip. So we heard a lot about that. And I'm sure that was, I'm not going to quantify that with any data point tonight. I, that's probably a big reason why we weren't quite as positive with some of those. I mean, seven out of 10 people feeling positive is, is a good number, but I'm sure that a fraction of those people were at least disappointed by some of the decisions around proms and, and those kinds of things, which were difficult to implement during the middle of, just a guess.
Any other questions? Again, no actions really needed on that. And now, student representative, that's a bubbly.
All right. So, good evening, everyone. This is my report for the end of August and September. So first off, personally, I am happy to be back in school and I know a lot of my peers are happy to be back in school. It's nice to kind of just go to lunch, like with actual people, you know, and talk and not have like a screen, be like, Kay, you can go to lunch now. You know what I mean? It's also nice to like engage with our teachers and actually meet them face-to-face and have like a better lesson. I know one of my, my biotech teacher, he was saying it was difficult last year not being able to do labs, because that's basically what that, that class is. So I know it's a lot more engagement along both, with both students and like teachers as well. Another thing that I mean, it's kind of a concern, at least for me personally, though, is figuring out an outfit now to wear to school. I'm not going to lie, I wore a nice sweatshirt, but I did have sweatpants on. Like, other than that, all things are good, you know, coming in school, it's better to be in person, especially same with shop as well. So first off, we had our senior sunrise for senior class. That was actually a really good turnout. A lot of students were there. It kind of just started the school year off on a good foot, especially for the senior class. I know you kind of gave your input on that last part about like how some things were kind of stripped away from the juniors and seniors specifically. So that was kind of nice, kind of like get something that we can do. Same with like the backpack idea that I mentioned last time, there were a lot of cool backpacks. I'm still wearing my backpack. So that was also, I know, I'm on, I'm on co-op, so I couldn't, I didn't have it. And then I had my cheer backpack, but that's boring. So next time, I will, I am going to bring it next meeting, okay?
Hold you to it.
Yes, you can hold me to it. I will bring it. But that's also fun. And it's just like, it's kind of something silly and to think about, like when you see a backpack, you're like, oh, that's a senior, you know what I mean? Something like that. Planning, well, we did plan a back-to-school event for the senior class. It's called Falling Back to School, because it's in the fall. So it's basically just something, again, to raise spirit and to get seniors excited for their last year. They're able to bring in underclassmen. So that could be from any grade, like I said, underclassmen doesn't have to be a junior specifically, just to kind of get them involved as well. So it's going to be like a dunking. I know there's going to be like backyard games, inflatables, lots of contests. And again, it is a fundraiser. So that's also cool that. It'll be raising money for hopefully a prom, which is what the student council, or the seniors at least, the class council is striving for. I know that the junior class officers are also striving for a junior banquet this year. I talked to one of them today, actually, a member of the council. And they have a couple fundraisers that they're kind of getting the ball rolling on. So that's kind of exciting for them. I am going to get back to you guys on what the freshmen and sophomore are doing. Like I said, I was on co-op. So hopefully, next time, I can kind of give you an update on the underclassmen. Something else that we're kind of trying to do is, again, with prom, I'm trying to do a homecoming. That's a huge question that every, everyone is asking us. So try and get that normalcy back. It is difficult, obviously, because COVID is still around and we want everyone to be safe, but we're just going to try our best to get things going back to how they were. And same with Spirit Days. So the football team, I know they won their first game, which was very exciting. I know a lot of students are very, very excited about doing themes for the football games. And that's just bringing students closer together and bringing school spirit around and just having like an all-around good time. So that's going to be really fun. You guys can come to the games, too. This week is neon themed, so go ahead, buy a highlighter kind of shirt, you know what I mean? Nice and bright like that. And just come support the school. Lastly, let's see. So also, the student council is trying to get a principal's day sometime in May. That's just a principal's day. Obviously, we kind of only have one, but also it's going to be like an administrative day for students to thank their administrators and teachers and obviously the principal and stuff like that, just for everything that they're doing. I know before you guys were kind of saying, you mentioned Mr. Williams and how he's very interactive. And I also wanted to say thank you, because as a student, as a senior especially, it's nice to like see you all the time. You know what I mean? With, with things, like either way I go, it's always Mr. Williams is always there, always there, like in our corner to back us up. So also really good. And same, I like speaking with Mr. Watson. I know he helps us get stuff done. He tries his best definitely to help the upperclassmen. So that's really fun. It just, it just makes everyone feel nice and kind of heard, appreciated to be here at school. So that is kind of the end of my report. Thank you for time. Any questions or concerns?
Mr. Shea?
Two quick questions. Do you have a date for that fallback camp?
Uh, yeah, October 2nd. Want to say it's four to nine, or it might be five to nine. I can double check on that time.
October 2nd?
Yes.
And the second question is, I may be mistaken, but at the end of the last meeting, I thought that you were involved in a heavy discussion with Mr. Williams about what backpack he was on where.
Yes. And I didn't see that, too. On the first day of school, I went up to.
I'm, I'm just wondering if he.
Fortunately, he didn't.
We'll see what he comes up with, with the neon shirt. That's what we're going to get. That's the next step.
I know.
Well, Superman.
I, I went up to him. I didn't go up to him. I asked where his backpack was. But I'll let it slide, because I didn't bring my backpack today. So we have our backpacks. We'll show you guys. You know, you guys, I told you guys to bring your backpacks, too. So I'm still waiting to see that at the next meeting. I hope, I hope I see it, guys. Oh, yeah, right? Hey.
Theme day for principal day.
Yeah. Definitely. Follow through now, right? Don't have anyone to run against, but you never. It's something that takes you out of the league, you know?
I'll take my grandson.
Go ahead.
Any other questions of Sarah? Thank you very much, Sarah.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
Okay, moving right along on the new business, new superintendent induction program. Tor introduction, Mr. Watson.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Yes, I want to introduce Maureen LaCroix. She is my NISA New Superintendent Induction Program mentor. I've been working with her since July. We've had a few in-person meetings, as well as she has been here. And we've also met remotely with, with other new superintendents from across the Commonwealth. So I wanted to formally introduce her to the committee and also give her the opportunity to kind of introduce and speak to you directly. So.
Watson, and thank you for having me this evening. I'll be very brief. The, the new superintendent induction program, leadership program between the school committee association, the superintendent association in Massachusetts, and DESI, the Department of Elementary and Secondary. And the program was designed 13 years ago. We're in a 12th cohort now to support the leadership of new superintendents in Massachusetts. And the program is designed so that there are coaches, such as myself, who are retired superintendents of school from Massachusetts, who work with new superintendents. So we work as a collaborative group where the coaches are constantly learning together and learning with our new cohort superintendents. Superintendent Watson is part of one of our largest cohorts coming in. He came in sooner than July, but the cohort officially began on July 1st. And we have over 30 superintendents who are bringing in Massachusetts this year to their jobs. So the design of the program is that we bring superintendents together monthly basis when the school year starts as part of what we call content institutes, where they are learning together. Our focus is on leadership. Our focus is on student achievement and on student learning. So they come together. They come from all parts of the state, from vocational schools, from rural schools, from some of our largest cities in the state, and from suburban districts. And people might say, well, that's kind of a mix of all different kinds of jobs. What we've learned in this program is superintendent leadership at, at its core is similar across districts in terms of what are the skills you need, what are the things that you need to pay attention to as a superintendent if you want to be successful. And that's our job. We want you to be successful in your job as superintendent. You will hear tonight from Superintendent Watson about his entry plan. And that is part of the NISA program. It's a requirement that you develop an entry plan, that you apprise the school committee of that entry plan. That entry plan will lead to a report of entry findings, which you will hear about again in the spring from the superintendent. And then, starting in the spring into the summer, the superintendent will be working on a strategy for district improvement. That strategy will cover three to five years of work usually, and it will focus again on students and on student achievement and on the instructional core in your school. So it's a very structured program. We think that it's a very supportive program for superintendents. And we feel happy that we work in Massachusetts where 12, 13 years ago, people recognized bringing people into such a significant job as the superintendency hires. So that's when DESI, the Superintendents Association and the School Committee Association came together and supported this program. So I'm very happy to be here supporting your superintendent and feel that you are a future here as a district with him as the hound, at the helm will be, continue to be promising. So I'm really happy to be here. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions for us? Yeah, thank you very much for your time. And Mr. Watson, Superintendent Watson? I understand you're leaving after this.
I'm going to listen to him.
Are you going to listen? Okay, very good.
Probably going to, going to give me some grade on that or some feedback. I want to dismiss the professor early. I'm, I'm always okay with him. That's all right.
At this time, Mr. Watson, Superintendent Watson will give his entry plan.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. In your packets is the superintendent director's entry plan, which was promised during the transitionary period for you. I just want to highlight a few, a few pieces of this that I think are at the core of the work I am striving to do every day. First of all, building a plan, comprehensive plan that engages the entire team, all of the stakeholders, from teachers to teaching assistants to administrators to you folks, to city council members, to sports of selectmen, sending district school committees, our students. That's an important piece of the work that lies ahead. One of the most important things I can do is make sure that I hear voices of all of the stakeholders. And so much of that work was done during the pre-entry or transitionary phase. There is more work to do this fall as I try and build, especially with student groups. And so I'll, I'll, I'll work with Sarah on that as we try to build small student groups so that I really understand the issues from all aspects of our school communities. As I said during my interview and during this process, I will make every decision as superintendent is the best interest of students. I hope that I can make decisions that are in the best interest of all our community stakeholders. But I have to put my head on the pillow every night. The only way I can do that is if I make sure that those voices of students in this school are always at the center of what my thoughts are. And so that will be the key driver of all of those decisions. Trust is an important piece of that work achieved. And so I pride myself having very open, very honest, very direct conversations with people. It's important the way those conversations happen. And so while I'm a human and I often can get emotional like anyone else, taper those emotions, even when other folks don't. It's important that I always demonstrate a calm and steady hand as I lead the district. But I want to make sure that people know that when they have something to say, I will hear them, that they can expect to get honest and direct feedback back from me, even when we don't agree. Those are, those are important steps. And so I want you folks to know as the school committee members, that that is what I promised when I interviewed. It is what I will do as superintendent director. I also included a listing of all the documents I've reviewed as part of the pre-entry phase, so that you can feel comfortable that I am up to speed on a wide range of topics, including organizational charts. You're aware of the fact that I've been heavily involved in labor negotiations for some time. I've looked at every individual employment contract from the district. I'm aware of threatened pending lawsuits, as well as recently settled lawsuits, all of the budgets, all of the grants, all of the program advisory minutes, education evaluation documents, technology plans, capital improvement plans, and the like. I have reviewed each of those documents that I've listed there. I consider myself to be up to speed on every one of those areas. I also included a section of the thoughts, questions that guided my transition meetings with administrators, individual teachers, as well as community stakeholders. During the entry plan, a piece that is coming now, I intend to hold additional small group conversations with students, administrators, and teachers. I will be offering again this fall, the opportunity to school-based administrators, teachers, and students for the first time, the opportunity to sit with me for 15 or 20 minutes. I was pleased last spring to hear directly from 85 teachers. I want to make sure that I give the opportunity to other teachers who maybe didn't take advantage of that during the pre-transitionary phase, to take advantage of that now. So that offer will come in October. I intend to sit down with those groups next month. Short intervals, small groups with students in particular, so that they don't feel uncomfortable in a one-on-one environment. And I work with Sarah and other class officers to make sure that we're getting a cross-section of our student population. As Mrs. LaCroix mentioned, I plan to present an entry plan report on my findings related to this in February or March of 2020.
Are there any questions of?
I just wanted to say that, oh, sorry, blah, blah, blah. I'm so glad that Superintendent Watson is here for us and terrific team, including Sarah, and all right to this coming year.
Thank you, Dr. Marlin.
Other questions? Okay. I believe we need a motion to action on this. So moving along, tech operation compliance, NIESC updating.
So, yeah, NIESC audit, not so long ago. Right? Okay. So NIESC is an accreditation team that depends on the Department of Education audit. They are a group of our peers that tour our school, each of our career and technical and educational areas, and share best practices, how we can do. and shared best practices, how we can do better. This team was led by Kathy Canola, a well-respected member of our community. Invited us with a team of twenty-five educators from across the state focused on seven pre-selected standards. Standard had certain number of indicators, they offered recommendations and accommodations in each of the standards, as well as thirty-eight educational areas. The standards included core values and expectations, which had five indicators, nine combinations, and recommendation. Curriculum had ten indicators, combinations had seven recommendations. Construction, six indicators, combinations, four recommendations. Assessment, eight indicators, six combinations, eight recommendations. Ultimately, a ship, sixteen indicators, ten combinations, nine recommendations. Services and support, eighteen indicators, ten combinations, nine recommendations. School finance and community relations, ten, twelve indicators, ten combinations, five, uh, nine recommendations. So all the indicators were seventy-two indicators, and forty-nine combinations and fifty-two recommendations. Thirty-eight educational areas, we had sixty-nine combinations and eighty-two. A total of a hundred and eighteen combinations and a hundred and thirty-four recommendations. Our last evaluation, two thousand and nine, with Mr. Shea, we had a hundred and fifty-seven patients and a hundred and seventy-three recommendations. He had thirty-nine more combinations and thirty-nine more recommendations. Well, fairness to you, Mr. Shea, you had twelve indicators, so you're. The major focus for the district, the general advisory committee, the district will reinstate the general advisory committee this year. See profile listings, I'm analyzing the various software packages and platforms to track competencies in real time. Comment planning and P L Cs for vocational areas, this will be a district initiative. And curriculum scope and sequence, Mr. Williams, Mr. Angelo and the academy administrators will lead this area of improvement. So that's just the beginning of our report that we'll continue to go on with. Right now, we've developed a spreadsheet and the academy administrators and the department heads, along with lead teachers, inputting their status to each of the recommendations and commenting on the comments if they want, but they have to give something for every one of the eighty-two recommendations. Now I'll share that out when we get there. Any questions on the process? I know you, most of you were here with the dinner and everything, you know how it goes, I just wanted to let you know where we stand. This is a two-year evaluation that we'll have done in one year, by the way, because of COVID. We kind of lost the year on this. Mr. Watson?
Anybody has a question, Mr. Watson? Do the N E S update, C B T advisory board?
So they wanted us to, you know, establish a general advisory committee, but we'll start with this year's program advisory be held on, held on October twentieth at six P M. So we've always done a good job with our program advisory committees, we've not always had a general advisory committee. Our advisory committees consist of an advisory chairperson from each of the program advisory committees. The goal for the general advisory committee is to meet with the administration and the school committee and discuss their concerns and vision of their respective areas. They want to make sure that you're free here, concerns. Donovan Ken and I will coordinate both these events, Mr. Williams will run the program advisory, and the superintendent and I will facilitate the general advisory to ensure they were able to meet with you and share their thoughts, concerns and areas for improvements. This way, so that they know that they've been heard through you, that we're not hiding anything, that they're speaking directly to you.
Any questions, Mr. Watson, relative to the general advisory board meeting? Advisory committees, pretty well covered.
Yeah, yeah, well, we do the program advisory, that's, that's the one with all the areas. Each career and technical area has a program. The general would be the chairperson of each meeting with you. So we've always had the general, we've always had the program advisory committees.
Have had the general advisory.
We have, but it's been kind of in and out.
Very good participation.
You're right about that, sometimes two people show up. And it may be the same here, but we need to give that the all advantage.
Questions? Any action is necessary on that one either. Okay, moving right along, Ursa Free Application Grant.
Mr. Watson? Thank you, Mr. Toomey. Included in your packet was the S of three grant application survey. This is a federal grant application required to get stakeholder feedback around that. Those result, those were the questions that we sent out, we did have detailed responses. You have that handy? I'm gonna turn this over to Mrs. Stewart so she can share the results of that survey with you.
Thank you. So the survey that you have in front of you was emailed to parents, guardians, families, community members, which were made up from the advisory board listing for all the twenty-seven shops. It went to faculty, staff. Everyone here in the district. We received three hundred and twenty-nine responses. From these responses. It was twenty-eight point nine percent of teachers, guidance and nurses that responded. It was fifty-five point six percent of parents that responded. They had a series of questions that you have in front of them that they had answered, whether they felt strongly, they agreed, they disagreed, that was for three of the questions. Then the fifth question that they had to answer was to choose three items that they felt the most strong about. So I was working with the team yesterday on what the items were. And from a very quick glance this morning, it seemed that the number one priority for both teachers, nurses and guidance and parents, families and guardians was to provide additional staff, which is the very first option. On the question number five, five, to provide additional staff to provide instruction slash intervention for students to close the learning gaps. The second top choice for that, for families and teachers was social emotional needs of our students and their families. The third was a very comparable percentage between families, parents, guardians and teachers, guidance, nurses was to continue with facility improvements or ventilation and also for additional supports for students, whether it be summer programs or after-school programs. So those are the three priorities that we as a team will focus on when we are writing the grant so that we can make sure that we allocate the funds that we have been allocated by the state properly based on this survey result. I'm still working on compiling the information that, Mr. Watson, we will get that to you. But the three hundred and twenty-nine responses, I can get percentages quickly, but then the other questions that they are being responses to openly, I have to sort through and make sure that we can get a decent-sized document so that it's not overwhelming for you.
We'll be providing updates on this next month. The S of three grant applications due October fourth. Twenty percent of the funds that the district received are earmarked towards social emotional well-being of students. And so, while we have that plan in place, which we anticipate having ready for October fourth, we'll be sharing that with the committee.
Are there any questions? Watson, Stewart? To the survey? Questions, the motions being honored to approve? The rule? Second. The second, and on the question? Favor? Close, so voted? Moving right along. Superintendent District Smart Goals. Thought that was a mistake.
No, no, it is not. That key, Mr. Toomey. So in your packets tonight are my proposed SMART goals for this, for this year, including the new SMART goals for inclusivity and equity that are added to the back of the traditional SMART goals. I've laid out what I consider to be a pretty ambitious goal setting. And I want that to be indicative of kind of what my philosophy around goals are. I, I understand the angst that comes with being a professional and always wanting to feel like you're meeting or exceeding expectations. But I think we always want to have a high bar, right? It's okay that we don't meet every single indicator, we should be striving to meet educators. I'll give you an example, about five years ago, we set an ambitious goal under the old MCAT system for C P I points in math. That was five points higher than, it was the state average, it was five points higher than we'd ever achieved. And of course, there's going to be pushback around that, well, we're always, we always do this, how are we going to get it five points higher? And we didn't get there in year one. Did in year two, year three. And so these goals, I'm perfectly willing to accept as the leader of the school to get, didn't meet, not enough progress or whatever the box that gets checked on in June. It isn't about what my personal goal is, my personal rating is. It is about us setting ambitious goals that put student interests first. And so some of these folks are there. And I say that publicly tonight because that will be my directive to the principal and leadership. We can still give a teacher proficient exemplary in their individual ratings if they don't necessarily meet the district graduation goal. The district graduation goal here has never been met. About fifteen years, it's never been met. But that doesn't mean that shouldn't be our goal. That is, we're state, schools are across the state, we want to be striving towards that point. And it'll keep us focused on making sure that we keep climbing. And I, and I think that's an important life perspective for all of us is we, we shouldn't be setting personal goals for ourselves that we hurt over in two days or two months. We want to be setting personal goals that are going to be challenging and push us to always try and be our best. And so I want to publicly state that to the school, community, listening to our students, to our teachers. I will stand with them and behind them as we work every day to try and be better than we were the day before. That doesn't need to impact what our proficient or exemplary ratings are. We just keep doing the best that we can and, and will be proficient or exemplary, we'll actually move more towards exemplary. So I'm happy to entertain any questions around the two, around the student learning special practice goal or the two district goals that are set forth tonight.
The motion being in order to accept? The rule? Have a second.
Second.
Second, on the question? Question? Watson? I was just calling by saying it is a, I've seen a lot of these and it is a very high goal. But again, I respect you, your comments you said. Feel that high goal and make it easy goal, so. Good choice. Comments? All the comments are questions, motion to approve? I mean, a motion made, I mean, all those in favor? Close, so voted? Discussion on substitute pay.
Thank you, Mr. Toomey. No action required tonight, but I did want to advise the committee that we are about to undergo a thorough and comprehensive review of substitute pay scales both within the district and in the region. And so I've asked Mrs. Stewart and others to begin that conversation. Principal Williams will be at a South Coast principals' meeting on Thursday. I've asked him to bring that issue up as well. I want to, I want to identify what we pay for substitute teachers at greater New Bedford Tech and where that lines up with the region's substitutes. As you can imagine, substitute teachers are difficult to come by everybody at this point. I want to make sure that we're offering a competitive pay for that, for that work. So we're going to do a pretty comprehensive analysis over the next thirty days. And we expect to have something to present to you folks in a month's time. But I wanted to kind of advise you of that. And I also wanted to advise teachers who I know are going the extra mile here covering classes when some of their, their colleagues are out. And that is, that is not easy, and that is a burden. And so I'm deeply appreciative of that work because it's what's required to make sure our students are getting the best education. But I owe them, as well as this committee, a comprehensive review of the structures to see if there's anything we can do as a district to try to alleviate that burden on teachers. And that is what we'll do over the next thirty days, and we will get a report to you in October.
Any questions? To substitute pay? Okay, I don't believe a motion is needed for that, no action. Okay, moving right along. Number seven, report on personnel appointments, retirements, resignations. Motion to place on file? Yeah, motion to place on file, we have a second. We have a motion and a second on the question. Is in favor? So voted. Information of superintendent's family welcome back letter. Watson?
Just wanted to include in the packets the welcome back letter we sent to families. And as I indicated earlier, I'll be providing copies of the committee of the weekly updates to staff beginning in October.
Action necessary? Moving right along. Fall off schedule. Your package is a copy of the fall off schedule. Does anybody have a question relative to the fall off schedule? Okay. Yes, it is nice to ask. Any no action necessary in that, Addison report schedule?
Just going to continue the practice of my predecessor to reveal the Addison communication scheduled by department. That is a copy of this year's schedule that will begin next month as well. So you can look forward to some reviews from each of those academies and departments.
Any questions on it? Action necessary. Next is the B I N X now COVID-nineteen, that's the day protocol.
Just, that's the informational packet we sent home to families, that's what we use to kind of educate people around the practice so that you, you folks also have that information.
Questions? Next, protocol? And will you update whether you want to?
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't include those. And so what I'll do is I'll, I'll include all of September and October and next, and next. So folks know we're, we're sending that staff every Sunday night just to kind of advise them of, of the weekend. Welcome them back and know we're all in this together, so.
Okay, at this time, I will ask if there's any other committee discussion? And the business that might probably come before it? Do you have any? Are you none? Moving on to executive session on the chapter thirty, section twenty-one. Committee will be adjourned. Executive session on the chapter thirty, section twenty-one to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. Deputy Educators Union to discuss strategy with respect to the collective bargaining. Greater New Bedford Administrators Union. Here has determined that the open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining. Committee members will not be returning to open session. Purpose of tonight's meeting is the strategy with respect to collective bargaining Educators Association to discuss collective bargaining with Greater New Bedford Administrators Association to consider the purchase, exchange lease or value of real estate property to expand our school facilities. Time I'll call, we'll call void, want to executive session.
Dr. Marlin? Mrs. Riberel? Mr. Olivera? Mr. Shea?
Yes.
Bernie Waller?
Motion is unanimous. Okay, N E S is now adjourned, we'll move into executive session. Thank you, everybody, for coming, thank you for your time.